For the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. I will call the meeting to order. Jeff, is there any additions to the agenda or changes?
I have a handout for item six B related to a utility easement request that came in late last week.
Yeah, it was on the agenda.
I did add it, but anything that comes after its first published, I treat as new.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, Tom moves. Dave seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. Is anyone here for public comment? All right. Is there anything you want pulled from the consent agenda?
I got one little minor change on the auditor's warrant.
Okay.
I let Jeff's office know about it, but I noticed it was still on this is that on my mileages, it had a council on aging on the twenty-sixth. That was by Zoom, but on the twenty-fifth, it didn't have a mileage.
Oh, okay.
And so it's forest management, just to change those two.
Okay.
And Kay's office responded that they would correct that, and I'll make sure that it is before we, that the corrected one is the one that's included in here.
Okay.
The dollar amount's the same.
Okay, anything else? All right, a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, ten moves.
I'll second.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose motion carries. Mike?
Good morning.
Good morning.
For employee recognition today, in the highway department, we have David Kallstorf. Maintenance two foreman began the full-time position on October sixth. In human services, Jennifer Karenin, social worker, is recognized for twenty-five years of service on October twelfth. Sean Hagan, case aide, began the full-time position on October seventh. And in the sheriff's department, Sharon Good, dispatcher jailer, began the part-time position on October eighth.
All right, thank you. And I believe Jennifer's going to take a picture.
I don't have my camera.
Okay, Steve, do you want to go with her? Mike, do you want to take the picture or Jeff?
Just do it over here.
Okay. Thank you for your twenty-five years.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I lost my agenda here. All right, we have North Memorial. Who is going to speak?
I'll start out.
Okay.
Madam Chair. My name is Kevin Lee, and I'm the emergency services relationship specialist with North Memorial Ambulance. And in my position, I work with cities, counties, other public safety partners, and hospitals. And I'm going to introduce our whole team here. We have representatives of all levels of our leadership structure at North. And actually, I think I'll have them introduce themselves. Brent?
I am Brett Custer, Director of Operations for North Memorial.
Scott Johnson, District Manager.
Michael Zimmer, Operations Supervisor for Park Rapids.
So Mike is our boots-on-the-ground person here in Park Rapids all the time. And I want to provide you with a report for 2024 through September, so essentially, end of third-quarter report. And I think that the timing is probably right to report out on a quarterly basis on our Park Rapids operation to this group if you would be agreeable to that. I think that with all of the challenges facing EMS right now, I think it would be good to do a quarterly report to keep you informed, give you the opportunity to ask us any questions about what is going on with the service here in Park Rapids. And so that's something for you to think about, but that's something that we're certainly willing to do. And the format that I've included today, we could use that, or we could change that if there's other things that you would want included in such a report. So as far as staffing goes, I'm sure you are aware that there is a nationwide shortage of EMTs and paramedics, and this has affected us here in Park Rapids as well. We have done several things to enhance our recruitment and retention efforts. We have a resident EMT program, which is a program where we hire laypeople and train them to be EMTs in exchange for two years of service with us. We also pay our current EMTs to go to paramedic school, so any of our current team members that want to go to paramedic school will pay for that for them. We have very competitive sign-on bonuses, and our wages and benefits are very competitive, too. Each year, we make wage adjustments to remain competitive. We study the market and what other ambulance services are paying and giving for benefits across the state, so we do our best to keep up with that. So we're not just sitting on our hands and saying it's too hard to find people and there's nothing we can do about it. We've been working hard to recruit and to retain people. As far as the current staffing model is concerned, we have one crew on twenty-four-seven and a second crew on duty from nine AM to nine PM. Both of those crews are based at the Park Rapids station, and that second crew just started here on October eighth. Yeah. So that second crew just started. And our staffing has continued to improve. We recently hired two full-time paramedics, which is a difficult thing to do right now. To a large degree, we're all fighting over the same pool of EMTs and paramedics in Minnesota.
Excuse me, Kevin, are they local or are they moving in?
Are they local or moving in?
Local, one's local, one's moving in.
Thank you.
And a few other questions on the recruitment. Do you reach out to the local high schools at all to work with Crystal?
Yes, sir. We'll get to that. Yeah. Sorry, I had that grouped under community involvement, but it probably should have been in here.
Well, I have one more question before you move on to. So you're training EMTs, and then they commit to two years of service? Are they a certified EMT then by the time the training is done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So they can stay on after that?
Yes.
Or move about? Okay.
Yep. All right, as far as the volumes go, and by volumes, we mean how many patients we actually transported, so it doesn't include those cases where a patient isn't transported to the hospital. In 2024, year-to-date through September, we've transported one thousand two hundred and fifty patients. And comparing that to 2023 for the same time period, we transported just a few more last year than we have this year. As you may recall, we changed our license in Park Rapids, our EMS RB license, from a full-time ALS license to a part-time ALS license. And that took effect on January twenty-fifth of this year. And so what that allows us to do is, with a full-time ALS license, you have to have a paramedic on every crew. You can't put two EMTs together. And with a part-time ALS license, it allows you to put two EMTs together on an ambulance crew and to stay in service. So without that, if you don't have enough paramedics to cover the shift, you can't run that truck without a paramedic on it. And obviously, a BLS or two EMT ambulance is better than no ambulance. And to be honest, there's a lot of things that our EMTs can do above and beyond the basic EMT level of certification in Minnesota. There are variants to do several other things. So they can actually do a lot.
So what's the negative? Do you lose a little bit of robustness because you don't have a paramedic versus an EMT in certain situations?
Yeah, actually, the most common reason that, like if we have a basic life support crew working in some of our areas, on the way to the hospital, they'll call for an intercept with an ALS unit. And the most common reason for that is for pain control. So like if somebody has a fractured hip or something. It's not for some lifesaving procedure. It's pain control, but EMTs aren't allowed to give any of the pain medications we carry on the ambulance. Only about ten percent of all of our runs are a true life-threatening situation. And even with those, EMTs can defibrillate, stop bleeding, put on tourniquets. They can still do a lot. So at any rate, when I initially talked about our license transfer with Jeff, we thought it would be valuable to include that in on a report for your group. So so far in 2024, we've had an ALS crew on eighty-one percent of the time and a BLS crew on nineteen percent of the time, which is actually still pretty good. And again, it allows us to keep ambulances in service when we otherwise would not have been able to do that.
Before you go on to response time, so the volumes, do you have a lot of instances where you show up and you don't actually transport, so then you don't get paid?
We have some. We don't have a lot, but we have some.
Because I know legislatively, we're trying to get that changed?
Yes. Yes. And that's another thing that I'm very involved with. With this job as an EMS relationship specialist is working with our lobbyists, too. So yes, that's definitely something. We could go on, as you're well aware, we could go on talking about that for quite some time, but there's a lot of benefits, to make a long story short. Bringing someone to the hospital is not always the best option for them or the healthcare system, and it's the most expensive option. But that's the only way you get paid is by taking someone to the hospital. As far as the response times are concerned, we're reporting out on response times for the entirety of Hubbard County here, so obviously, that includes the city of Park Rapids. And so in, the first one on there is a ten-minute compliance percentage, so the amount of time that we arrive in less than ten minutes in Hubbard County is fifty-six percent. The amount of time that we arrive in less than twenty minutes is eighty-seven percent. And the amount of, the percentage that we respond in less than thirty minutes is ninety-six percent. Now, the state requirement for a service area, this specific service area and a service area of this size is thirty minutes. Certainly, the addition of the crew that we put on on October eighth will have a very positive impact on this. That's the only thing we can do to improve response times here is add more coverage, add another truck. There's no point in like moving the ambulance around or anything. The most significant impact we can make is by adding personnel, which is what we're trying to do and have done.
So are you ever called to Beltrami County because they don't have an ambulance available?
Yes, is that correct?
No, once in a while.
Okay.
And so you just go to fill in. So then who takes your spot in Hubbard County? Or does it respond, what happens to the response time if you're up there responding to somebody? How does that work?
It could certainly have a negative impact on our response times here. We have mutual aid agreements, and in turn, they have to come down here and help us when our ambulance is gone, too.
Okay.
So it truly is a mutual thing. We have to help each other.
What happens if you don't make the thirty minutes?
The state realizes that, you know, with one ambulance here, there's only so much that you can do, and that there are some areas throughout Minnesota that you won't reach in thirty minutes, even if you have ten ambulances on, just because of the distance. So they understand that in most of the rural communities, the providers are trying to do the best they can to have as many ambulances on duty as possible. As far as patient satisfaction scores are concerned, we do patient satisfaction surveys. Not every single patient gets one. There's a percentage of patients in each area that get one or receive one. And these patient satisfaction results are specific to Park Rapids. These are just Park Rapids patients. And so again, through September, our score was eighty-nine out of a hundred, which is very good. We compare ourselves to other ambulance services throughout the state and throughout the country, and that's a very good percentage. We also included the comments that we received so far this year, and these are all the comments. And so when I would report to you in the future, if that's what you'd like to do, we always include on the patient satisfaction surveys, comments, good or bad. So it's not like we just put the good ones on here. So the patient comments were, "They treated me with the utmost respect and was very glad to see them. Thank you." "I had an excellent experience. It was a very bad day for me, but everyone in the ambulance was kind and helpful and thoughtful and extremely skilled, and I thought did an excellent job in getting me to the hospital." And then the last one was, "They were a great crowd. I really appreciated their help." Typically, we do, in most of our areas, score pretty well when it comes to patient satisfaction. Then the last thing on our report is community involvement, and I'll probably have, Mike, do you want to come up here and help me with this? We do a lot in the community, as you'll see, in addition to just going on nine-one-one calls and doing ambulance calls. I'll just, I'll run through the high points, and then Mike can add to that because he does a lot of this. We do first responder education in the high schools. We do CPR and first aid classes for community groups, church groups, and so on. And those are free of charge. We participate in several community events. We participate in career fairs. And we work very closely with other public safety agencies, the hospital. So that's the high points, and Mike, expand on that however you would like.
Sure. Thanks for having us again today. We appreciate it. First responder classes in the Park Rapids High School. For the past six years, we've had a first responder class within the high school, teaching them how to be first responders, which is the first level in EMS. A lot of those students have gone on to serve with like the Hubbard First Responder Group. A lot of those students have gone on to become EMTs that are working for North Memorial currently.
Mike, do they have, what age can they earn EMT? What's the minimum age?
So minimum age for EMT would be eighteen. You can be a first responder at age sixteen. Also, to add, actually, starting today, we're starting an EMT class that we're holding in Park Rapids here with ten new students that hopefully will go on to work for us or work in the EMS field anyway. So that's starting today. CPR and first aid training for community groups, so I do a lot of work with like local churches and other groups going in and maybe not certifying them in CPR, but just going over, these are the steps of CPR, especially like churches that have AEDs. This is how you use your AED. This is how you do CPR in case there would be an emergency during church. Community events, we're in the Fourth of July Parade. We're at like events like Night to Unite. So we want to be really involved with our, in our community. Career fair, something else we've done, like the high school level, just trying to promote emergency medical services to our young people and also to the community. And then working collaboratively with the community. Working, we work very closely with the hospital, St. Joseph's Hospital in Park Rapids here with our first responder teams. We provide training for all the first responder teams in the area to keep them current and up to date on their skills. We work with businesses like Lamb Weston RDO, working with, we just had disaster planning out there, disaster drill, so we participate in that kind of stuff. Work with the high school and of course, our fire department and local law enforcement agencies.
Thank you, Mike. What questions do you have for us?
What additional trainings needed to be a paramedic?
Well, it depends upon what type of program you take. It's anywhere from like a year-long vocational-type program to a two-year associate degree program. And so it is at least another year in addition to the EMT, and in some cases, two years. As a matter of fact, there aren't too many programs anymore that you can get done in a year. It's more like eighteen months.
What is your coverage area in Hubbard County?
I wish I would have brought.
Just approximate.
You mean square miles?
No, just, you know, how far north and do you go far south or west?
Help me out with this, Mike.
Sure. So we cover pretty much all of Hubbard County except for the very northern townships. So that would be a combination on the west of Bemidji Ambulance and the east of Cast Lake Ambulance.
Okay. And then I used to, before I became a commissioner, I was on the Bemidji Rural Fire Association. And I know in Bemidji, the fire department goes out on medical calls, but not, no transport? And was wondering, does Walker or Park Rapids do something like that?
They do not.
No. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but oftentimes, in both communities, the police officers will first respond and help us.
Yes, the first responders. First responder groups, like Hubbard First Respones, respond and also either the sheriff's department or law, police department in Park Rapids. And they all have equipment, oxygen, AEDs, and things like that in their vehicles?
That's, I just thought it might be, it might help alleviate. You know, maybe somebody gets there in time, and then you guys can show up, and if they need transport or something like that. And I also wonder, too, when you talked about whether they get paid or not, I'm assuming in the city of Bemidji, it's because it's their fire department, then in a sense, they get, they're paid to go to these calls. And I just wondered, like I say, if that would help out Walker and Park Rapids and in those situations, and any other community that has a fire department?
Yeah.
So Park, excuse me, Park Rapids Fire Department is volunteer.
Okay.
I mean, they get benefits, but they don't get paid, I don't believe, for their time, do they?
Part of the, Bemidji actually has a, like a one-off fire department model in that they have a program, a dormitory-type program, where college students can live there, and in exchange for that, they have to go on call. So they have this unique program that works great for the students and the fire department, but it's difficult to achieve in other communities.
Yeah. And then I think they have one or two on-call right there all the time.
Yeah.
Like you said, then the rest of them are volunteers or on-call, whatever the lingo is.
Right, right, correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you went to a site and just administered first aid, you wouldn't get paid then for it?
The only, there's only two situations that we get paid, and Brent, correct me on this. One of them is if a patient is in cardiac arrest, and we do CPR, and we give drugs, and advanced airway, and so on, we can bill for that. And then another one is a diabetic, where if we show up and put an IV in and then give them glucose through the IV, we can bill for that. Is that correct, Brent? But those are the only two situations. So, you know, if somebody's in a car accident and we show up and check them out, and they just have a little cut, and they don't want to go to the ER, we can't bill for that.
You can't even get reimbursement, like a hundred and fifty dollars from the individual for your fuel and time of the rig and?
We, no. I will tell you that some services do charge patients for no loads. That's never been our philosophy. I'm not saying it wouldn't ever happen. But the downfall to that is that we never want to discourage people from calling, you know? We'd rather have the patient understand that, that they're not going to get charged if they don't go in and not be afraid to call nine-one-one, if that makes sense. You know, we don't want a deterrent for them not to call us in the first place.
I was talking to somebody last week, and they're part of an emergency response in the Fargo area. And if someone refuses transport, they have to sign a waiver.
Yeah.
And in that waiver, it states that they could be billed for a hundred and fifty dollars of a minimum charge for the services that were provided.
Yeah, there are, there are places that do that, yes. And we do the liability waiver for obvious reasons.
For your own protection.
To document that we in fact did offer to take them to the hospital, and they refused.
Go ahead.
If I can make a comment on that, there are services across the state that do that. Recently, in Grand Rapids, there was a practice before we took over there, and it caused a lot of commotion with the citizens. One instance is, is officer showed up, the patient had wanted the ambulance, but then law enforcement called the ambulance, checked out, and the patient was getting billed in one of the services. So for us, we've decided not to go there, though, because it actually causes way more hassle. It's not a norm in Minnesota. And I don't really want to be the first one to create that for the haves, but.
Take it.
That's the main reason why we don't do it.
So is North Memorial privately owned nonprofit? Is that what?
It's considered to be a hospital-based nonprofit. North Memorial Healthcare is the organization as a whole. We have two hospitals, the one in Robinsdale, which is a Level One Trauma Center, and then we have a hospital in Maple Grove as well. And then we have about twenty clinics. And so we're not a big health system, but we're a very big EMS system. But we're considered to be a nonprofit hospital-based ambulance service.
Do you see in the future coming to us and wanting to make a taxing district for, you know, the rest of Hubbard County? To meet expenses, or are you?
We're.
I'll let Brent answer that question.
Possibly, yes. We're doing everything we can to try to keep the cost low, which we're by a good way to make it on our own. But one difference between Park Rapids versus Walker or Longville is there are a lot of new transfers in Park Rapids out of the hospital, which helps.
Okay.
Some additional revenue, keep some expenses down for that. Like I said, we're trying everything, but I'm not going to lie. Likely eventually we'll have to come and ask for some type of help, but we're trying to do everything we can before we can do it all.
So would an example that transfer be someone that needs to go to rehab in a nursing home from the hospital?
That could be one, if they needed that, or. That, that could be one, if they needed that. Or most of them are, if I'm correctly, from Long Lake, are transferred to other hospitals, higher level of care.
Oh, okay, okay.
Transfers usually to Fargo.
Okay.
One of the Fargo hospitals.
So forgive me if I missed it, but Kevin, did you say how many no loads you had this last year?
No, I didn't. And I don't know off the top of my head how many there were, but it's usually like-
About twenty percent.
Yeah.
Usually it's twenty percent in no loads and/or cancels. There's, there's two types of variance there. One where we act, a no load is where we actually make patient contact and then interact with that individual. The other time is we could get paid for a car accident. But it looked really bad, but law enforcement or other first responders show up and no one's really injured. They, they will cancel us on that. So we kind of group those together. It, it's really about twenty percent. That's kind of the normal average across all of the regions that we serve.
It'd really be nice to have your mileage covered at least.
Some compensatory models based in there would be, would be nice to have, but especially those that, that we interact with, where we go and do an assessment. I often reference that to a clinic setting where if you, I don't feel really well that the clinics don't allow you to come into there and say, can you check me out? And if I'm really bad, I'll come inside and then you can charge me. But if I'm not so bad, I'll just go home. Clinic settings don't do that, but we do. So, but to Kevin's point, we, we don't want to impact people's outcome based on a, on a financial burden to them. We, most of our medics and EMTs do not understand the cost and the operation of it because we don't want that to interfere. We, we, our goal is to provide patient care at a high level and take care of individuals and serve our communities. After that, we'll try to figure it out and sort it out, but it's people first and that, that's our, our main goal.
Anything else for Ted? Jeff, I have a question. If we did quarterly updates, would you suggest that would be at a work session or a regular board meeting?
That would be your choice. We could do it at a work session. We could do it either way. Or, you know, we could do, we could do twice a year in person and we could do written ones in between, something like that.
No sense in bringing you in here unless we got a lot, you know, questions. A report will suffice.
But a report in this format on a quarterly basis would be really helpful, I think.
And it's easy to understand.
Oh, good. I was going to ask if this was going to work.
Would that be board consensus? We should do it that way?
Yeah, like you say, written every time and, and just one or two meetings a year. That'd be nice, in person.
And if we have questions, we can, Jeff can get to you and-
Absolutely, absolutely.
I've got him on speed dial.
Yep.
Well, we really appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time very much.
Thank you.
All right, Cory, you're up.
Good morning, all. I, I was gone for a week and it's, it's good to be back, so. Couple items here today. First item is to review and approve a request from the Hubbard County HRA, EDA for the conveyance of tax forfeited property for housing and future economic development. These were the four parcels that we discussed a couple of weeks ago. And the county would be, we have this letter from the, the Heartland Lakes Development Commission. And the county would be acting on behalf of this letter. And this just describes, the, the agenda item here just describes that we'll be withholding for six months, these four parcels. And if not acted on within six months, we'll have to wait another eighteen months. And the six-month withholding period will, will end April fifteenth, the date from this, this board meeting. So, six months from this board meeting.
I appreciated just the written conveyance to public entities. It was just good to reread that.
Sure. And yeah, thanks to Jeff. He helped out a lot with this, so. Lot of, lot of legal, legal terms in this type of stuff, so I'll, I appreciate any help I can get. And then just for the future, if these are, the conveyance is complete, we'll have to decide on values depending on which, what we're using the parcels for. So affordable housing, I think you can kind of work with. But once you're selling to commercial businesses, then that's when you have to pay full market value.
Mary will be working with the HRA board relative to plans for those parcels. I think there's even a conversation later this morning. And, and then we'll provide the documentation that Cory needs to make sure to dot the i's and cross the t's.
So the auction will be November fourth still and these are going to be withheld. So that's pretty much what this is. This is asking for is to withhold them parcels from auction. And I did get a couple of calls from the state lands and minerals department and they were concerned about the, the two parcels that we took off. And they do have the first right of refusal, so I told them that we, we aren't listing them at this time, so they're pretty, pretty pleased to hear that because they bought up against state land and then they, they, they're concerned about wetlands and different.
The only thing about minerals, I was just looking at a timber that was on there.
Yeah, yeah, but lands and minerals need to give us the approval to sell these lands, so.
So does this apply even in our area? So land sold now, if I understand it correctly? A government entity retains the mineral rights. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And it's, it's diff-
On the forfeited property, just through the forfeited.
Yep. And it's different on the iron range. There's a, with the new statute, different wording, there's the land, the past landowner can buy the mineral rights for fifty dollars, but luckily around with this area, we don't have to deal with iron ore and at this time. Who knows in the future what they'll find, but. So we're just asking for approval to withhold them parcels.
And I know this doesn't apply, but just for information, the city was looking at parcels and they didn't, did they submit anything?
They did. It was the last day and it was kind of a confusing deal, but we decided to, to hold them or bring them back from their withholding period. And we're going to offer them.
So the, the city withheld parcels from the spring sale?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They're not withholding any from this sale?
Okay.
And they released them from the spring sale?
Okay.
For a couple of reasons. And Cory and I had a couple of conversations and Jonathan got involved in that. They released them primarily because they didn't have a development. They had, they had a developer in mind and then that fell through. And so they're going to go on the, they'll be on over the counter now.
Yep.
And if they don't sell on over the counter, then they'll very likely come back to us with, with a conversation about some of those once they find a developer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Board wishes?
I'm going to go through.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Tom will second. Dave and Tom, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is another, it's, it's a, it's a land, land use item. It's a utility easement request from Itasca Mantrap to cross a small, small area of county land. It's a ten-foot on center line, each side of the center line for underground utilities and a twenty-five foot for overground utilities on each side of the center line. So located north of Big Sand Lake on Glenn Drive, just has to go across a tiny, tiny little area of county land and there's actually an easement already there. They just need the utility underground or overground and underground utility wording to be included in this easement, so, and recorded.
Yeah, the existing easement, as I understand it, has not been recorded. So that's their issue is-
Oh, interesting, okay.
And this came in late last week and I said, well, can it just wait till the next meeting? And they said, yes. We're, we're at the end of the season. We'd really like to get this done. So I think everybody out in that area would want those utilities to go through, but.
Yep. Yeah.
I'm going to go through.
Dave moves?
I'll say it.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? I'll, I'll go ahead Ted.
This is a question, what does the red, red line represent and the black line represent?
I believe the, the black line must be their existing. Yeah, I really don't know. I know the red line means their, the anticipated easement. For the, the past ones I've done, but the black line must mean existing utilities or?
I believe so.
I didn't see it any, anywhere, you know, describing what those-
Yeah, it'd be nice if-
That's what I assumed was one was for the utilities. And then I noticed there was some, looked like on other parcels too, so I'm I was questioning if those were existing easements.
I'm guessing those are existing. And then this, the red is the new, the, the, yeah, the new.
The red is the, is the new request.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
All right, thank you, guys. I'm going to stick her on for a little while.
Okay. Gosh.
Good morning. All right, I have a few items for you this morning. The first item I have is for the final payment for retainage for our South demolition landfill project. This is a project that we had completed last fall for covering the south landfill. And we've received all the required paperwork, got through all the issues that we've had, or not, we didn't have many issues, but got through our, some landscaping erosion issues some pre, earlier this summer. So Stan Tech, our engineering consultants have reviewed the payment application and supporting documents and found everything in order. And we're recommending approval for final payment to the retainage to TNT Construction Group for sixteen thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and sixty-seven cents.
So Jeff, would this be an example if we, if we raised the dollar amount coming before the board that this wouldn't come before the board?
No. And something like this where we've got a contract for, for an amount that was over that-
Yeah.
We would still have board decisions on all of these items. So just distinguishing this from the example I used last time was replacing a, a garage door-
Yeah.
In one of our buildings. But because of the, this contract was for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we still need board action through every step of that contract process.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ted moves?
I'll say it.
Steve seconds. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close motion carries.
All right, thank you. And then I guess just a quick update, that construction company TNT Construction was awarded our concrete crushing project earlier this summer. And they're going to be coming in later this week to set up, to start crushing their concrete, so.
I was just going to ask you.
Yep. So we're looking forward to that. The next item I have is for the review and approve quotes for cleaning of the South Transfer Station. So this would be the cleaning, the commercial side of the transfer station, including four pieces of heavy equipment that we had in the building as a result of the fire that occurred in the middle of July. This work was reviewed by and authorized by MCIT. We've already received funds for the, from the, for the work from MCIT. Cleaning would be done overnight at the facility, so it's not going to impact our operational hours. And then they would take, depending on the quotes, it'd take anywhere from one to two weeks to complete the, complete the work, so. We did receive two quotes for the project, with the low quote being Steematic, the Red River Valley out of Fargo, North Dakota for sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and forty-four cents. We did meet with both of these companies on site, went through, you know, pretty in heavy detail. You know, what cleaning methods they're going to be using, what they need for equipment, how are they going to work around our operations. So we did feel confident in both of these contractors, so.
Josh, when would they start?
Um, I think, I think both of them were like within, you know, ten days to two weeks roughly, so.
Thank you.
I know, um, last couple of years, I think it is, when you had somebody come and clean and you weren't happy with them, do you feel fairly confident that?
Yeah, based on, you know, our previous experiences, we've kind of tried to, you know, ask all the questions and and double-check everything on the front end. So I think we're, you know, both confident in both of these companies, but obviously with the, the one's quite a bit lower, so.
Yeah.
We'd be comfortable with them too, so.
I would say if you can, make sure to, make sure they cover everything properly, but having somebody walk through before they-
Instead of just with plastic bags?
Yeah, and it's a different, a little bit different process, so hopefully we should be safe there, yeah.
Board wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the low quote number two.
I'll say it.
Okay, so Ted and Steve, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and the last item I have was just an update, I guess, on the reuse center. Wanted to bring back some of these numbers as requested. So kind of, I just kind of laid out, you know, we've been tracking since February, we've been tracking several different categories. We kind of have a, a sheet, I guess, with you know, we break it out into different categories based on what our score report, the recycling report we have to do annually. So we kind of have stuff segregated into building materials, entertainment, household, electronics, others, which includes things like pallets.
Can you reuse any electronics?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's, people come in with a, you know, if it's a decent TV or a-
Oh, really?
Small appliance or something, we see them somewhat too, so. So anyway, we kind of have, you know, a weekly system down and goes into a monthly spreadsheet to kind of make it easy to track. So just looking at our numbers on the, the sheet that I attached for, for you. You know, we started out the first month in February, we had accepted about forty-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven pounds into the reuse center. And then, you know, going down through, through March, you can, and on, you know, we went from seventy-six thousand to eighty-six thousand, to a hundred and twenty thousand in May. About ninety-nine thousand in June, a hundred and thirteen thousand pounds in July, a hundred and four thousand pounds in August and ninety-four thousand pounds in September. The column next to that has what we, you know, we document what comes in. The column next to it has returned to the waste stream, so that's stuff that hasn't, you know, people haven't taken, that's sat around for a while that we weigh before we bring it back out and dispose of it. So that gets you to our, the net pounds that we reused and the net tonnage. So you can see like in our, our, you know, February, we're about twenty tons, March thirty-five tons, you know, all the way up to, I would say getting too close to be an average of about fifty tons is kind of what we've been seeing after we've been fully operational. So, you know, that's fifty tons of material every single month that we are not having to either bury in our demolition landfill or send out to Polk County, to their landfill facilities, so.
So besides the benefit of not, benefit of not landfilling, does, does it save us some money to then?
Well, I mean, if you look at just-
Cost of staff.
Yeah, you, there is some staffing costs involved, but you mean, you look at, you know, three hundred and thirty-five tons, that's probably about this year, that's probably about thirty thousand dollars less of a, you know, what we're paying just in the tipping fee. Plus you have hauling costs for transportation and solid waste management taxes. So, you know, I don't have a definite number, but is that, you know, upwards to forty to fifty thousand maybe so far this year that we've saved, but.
I think it also helps some, you know, people out too, because I, I had several vacuum cleaners, you know, still left over from the resort days. They only need one now. So I brought one over there and had a lady pick it up right away or as soon as I brought it, but she said, does that, does that work? I said, oh, yes, it does.
That's a good use of the old building too.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, kind of the numbers we had. And I think it's, you know, we're working, we've worked out, you know, some different bugs and you know, this grant that we received will, again, may hopefully make the building sustainable for another thirty, forty years and so we'll have a lot of work to do, a lot of changes coming at. But I think overall, it's been very successful so far, so happy with the numbers.
Go ahead Ted.
Is there any plans on doing this at the North Transfer Station?
Um, I would say if we get, uh-
Though we don't generate as much garbage up in the north end as you could do down here, but.
You know, we have like a small area, kind of a free-for-all area up by the office.
Up in the building, yeah.
Um, I think if we get- Um, I think if we get, you know, our regional funding for our, our regional C and D project, that we'd definitely build in some component, maybe not as large a scale, but. Thank you.
Do you use these numbers when you're doing grant writing?
Um, yeah, like this, I mean, this, these numbers, kinda the application of the grant that we just received to update the reuse center, I mean, I kinda had, uh, some of these numbers already, so kinda plugging them in to show that how much we can actually reuse helps, definitely helps for grant writing, yeah.
When you do the return to waste stream, um, do you do that on a monthly basis or every two weeks?
It's just, you know, if we're getting full up there, it just depends on how full it's getting, we'll go and clean it out every so often, so.
Okay.
Then like, you know, on here, there's zero, it shows zero from September, um, that sheet, you know, a lot of these sheets we do like on a daily basis, but that return to waste stream sheet sits up there for a while, so.
Sure.
You know, we probably did return some in September, but.
Well, thank you, I think these numbers are fascinating. I think it's just amazing.
All right, well, that's all I have, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up Scott.
Morning.
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 Um, just the one item on the agenda for us, and that is the resolution, um, authorizing execution of the, um, EWI, um, Traffic Safety Officer Grant. So it's a renewal of the grant that we're currently on, um, through the state of Minnesota, and it covers, um, one full-time deputy sheriff wages and fringe, so. Um, we're just asking for authorization to, uh, renew that grant into the next year.
What was it last year?
I'm sorry?
What was, how mu- what was the amount of the grant last year?
I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but it'd be slightly less than what it is this year, just.
I just wondered if, if the cola and all that stuff was.
It is figured into this year's request, so.
Yeah.
And we just talked about this last week at the.
We did, yeah.
Did you?
Yeah.
So.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Ted moves.
I'll second.
Steve seconds, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right Eric.
Well, let's see, did I skip something? No, I did not, okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have two items for the board this morning, the first is the twenty-twenty-five natural resource block grant funding that we received for our septic system, uh, program, as well as, uh, a one-time allocation that we were awarded for our low-income, uh, household failing septic system grant program, we were awarded, uh, a nice amount of a hundred and twenty thousand for next year that we can, uh, put toward that program.
Eric, I know you had said before that a lot of times the money doesn't get totally used, how much was used last year?
Uh, from last year's award amount, we've got like a little around five thousand that hasn't been.
Oh, so people are becoming aware and using it.
Yeah, and that was just due to, you know, the cost of a system now is larger than that amount, so people were waiting until we knew if we were gonna receive additional money so that we can apply that five grand that's left over.
Oh, good, so you don't have to give the five grand back to the state?
Well, you potentially would, but they give you like a three-year window.
Okay.
To spend the money, so, uh, thankfully, it's, we'll, we'll be able to put that to use. Uh, so this is just the grant that is required, uh, for us to receive the funds, we would get them usually in November, maybe early December, and then we'd be able to start, uh, giving notice of, uh, the additional grant money that we have available, otherwise the twenty-one thousand, two hundred just covers our, uh, administrative costs of operating the septic program.
So, is word of mouth getting out enough, or do you, do you feel you should contact each township so they're aware? Or I, isn't there a need because you're able to?
I think the word is getting out pretty well, a lot of the contractors inform people that they feel would be able to qualify. Uh, we also sent out a press release, put it on the website too. Um, I mean, we could certainly notify townships as well, um, but.
We can mention it at the Association of Townships, but, for Hubbard County, but a lot of the townships don't have representatives, so.
Eric, how many, how many of the grant applications do you think come from referral from the contractors? A good number.
A good number, I couldn't say exactly, but.
And, and as long as you're using, as long as there's not money left over that we're, we're not utilizing? Cause it sounds like you're able to use up the funds.
We, we can send, when we send the press release, we can send a copy to, um, the secretary for the HCTA.
Okay.
That'll, that'll get it out, if she wants to put it on agenda, she can, if she wants to distribute it, she can, but.
Okay, cause it's a wonderful thing to have.
Mm-hmm. And if we keep using it, we'll keep qualifying for more funds.
Yeah, um, this go-around, the state received a one-time additional appropriation of money to use for this purpose, so that's why we were able to get a, a nice amount, um, awarded to us. It was actually what we requested, so, uh, we thought we asked for above-reality number, and that'll show that next time we have to bump it up even more, but.
With a possible deficit looming, this might be like the best year. I'll move to approve, it's a great program.
Okay, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, motion carries.
Thank you. And the second item I have for you this morning is a conditional use permit application, uh, through Hubbard County, uh, with the NRM department. It is to allow the Garfield Lake Park on the northeast side of Lake Garfield to be able to operate as a county park. Some of the board would probably remember that this, uh, went through a conditional use application process several years ago. And the reason it is before you again is that the operating primer, excuse me, the operating permit that was required in order to allow the use to commence wasn't obtained, um, so that's the reason for the new application. The Planning Commission recommended approval with nine recommended conditions. Uh, the first are kind of standard, um, condition one, just that this is to allow a county park to operate. And condition two specifies the improvements that are allowed to be placed on the property and that if they wish for any additional improvements in the future, that would need to go back through an amendment process to the application. Three just spells out what is already in the ordinance to make it clear that the operating permit needs to be obtained in order for the use to be able to occur. Uh, condition four specifies hours that the park may be open. Condition five was, uh, from, uh, conversation that the Planning Commission had where they were concerned about, uh, the speed of traffic going along the north side of the property, since there's a township road that runs there as well as, uh, vehicle parking, uh, the parking area for the park is several hundred feet to the east of where the beach is on the lake, and so, uh, there was concern expressed about people just parking at the beach on the edge of the township road instead of parking in the parking lot. So that was where, uh, the department was asked to work with the township on how to most effectively address that. Condition six came up from, uh, input received from the adjacent landowner to the south who, uh, expressed concerns about, uh, park users crossing the property line, using some of his lake equipment and also readying up his lawn by driving, uh, I think, UTVs, ATVs, uh, through a fairly healthy series of boulders that have been placed to mark that property line, so if, people really have to be disrespectful of boundaries to, to do that. But that led to a, a fence being proposed, uh, along the parking area and where the, uh, playground improvements would be placed to help keep people from wandering. Uh, condition seven.
Eric, on that fence, cause I was there that night, um, I think there was discussion about a, having a wood fence versus a chain link?
Mm-hmm.
I don't see anything in there specifying the fence, are you okay with the wording? What type of fence?
I, it, it didn't make it into the condition, so if the board now would like to specify one or the other.
Okay, I believe, I believe the property owner preferred a wooden one, wasn't it?
I, I think the, the gist of it was in the end that it was gonna be up to communication between the landowner and the natural resources department.
Okay, thank you.
To agree on a type of fencing material.
Okay.
Uh, to be used and then, uh, placed and, and where exactly the trees would be placed in adjacent to that, so.
Okay, thanks Steve.
I'm assuming some kind of privacy fence?
Uh, yeah, I don't think, I don't think chain link was in the best interest, but it was.
And, and then.
It was beginning to be between the land department and the property owner to come to an agreement.
And then I'm assuming the county's putting up the fence?
Yeah, there was, I think Cory, he could speak for himself, but I believe he was willing to put up a wooden fence and then chain link was suggested by one of the planning commission members who has experience in operating parks in his past professional career and just felt that that would be a lower maintenance, uh, way to go.
So I don't mean to skip ahead, but it applies here, so if a chain link fence went, um, the conifer trees would go along the chain link as far as, um, a screen, am I reading that condition correctly?
I believe that was the intention, yes. Um, yeah, and that, I'll get to that, uh, final, uh, condition here in a second. Uh, the seventh proposed condition was, uh, that they wanted signs along the south property line to indicate that that is the property line, so people wouldn't trespass on the neighbor's property to the south. Uh, condition eight just states the signs have to comply with the county sign ordinance, and then the last condition nine, uh, was kind of an aesthetic sound barrier eventually of having a row of conifers, uh, planted along that south boundary, uh, to help separate it from the neighbor, uh, for noise as well as a barrier eventually, assuming the trees can get to decent size to keep people from having, uh, the potential to trespass on the neighbor's property.
So Eric or Cory, what, what size would the trees be when you put them in?
They'd be pretty small, right?
Yeah, just those little stuffs?
They're quicker growing and, um, the deer don't like them as much, so I think the white spruce would, um, be better up in that area.
Do they have a long life?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. They're not like jackpines? Okay.
And then they have the option, full branches that would block out.
Okay.
How did they get to the beach, is there a trail through the trees?
So, they go along the, they actually go up along the ditch or the, the roadway, so that's why they want, um, slow signs, uh, speed outside. Eventually, maybe we can make a little trail through the woods, but.
This is the first time I've looked at this, but that road is in a really bad spot.
Yeah, it's really kind of a mess.
Really should be moved.
You know, and they just.
Before it is ever appro- improved.
It, it actually is a relatively new location for the road, cause it used to run along the, the lake.
Oh, and looking, it shows a right, running right along the shore, the GIS map.
Yeah, that, and that was, that was the case, uh, you see the half dozen or so lots to the south of the park property.
Used to run there too?
Yep. So the developers, uh, worked with the township to get that old roadway vacated and then they constructed.
So I could see that happening with the rest of it at some point in time, so whoever's in charge of the township, don't improve that road too much.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's got its share of issues, cause the, the ice push affects the road, cause it's so close to the lake, but you can't go further away from the lake, because then you get into a wetland. So they're kind of in a rock and a hard place.
It's not the most ideal place for a park. Although the beach is wonderful.
I suppose you could make a trail through the woods easy enough, probably be the safer bet.
Yeah, and I believe, two thousand and sixteen, it was donated to the county to build it as a park, so. Yeah.
Kind of a low area, you might need a boardwalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a forested wetland in part of that area.
Well, a boardwalk would keep people following that path, you know, and make it easy for them.
Yeah.
Do you wanna add that as a condition, or you wanna just leave it as is?
Well, I know, we, Cory had also spoke, spoke about mowing it with a, with a skid steer and a mower and then, uh, wood chips. So it'd be a.
Okay.
It would be a drier area to walk across, and it would be a clearly defined path.
Yeah, my question was, do you wanna add putting a path in? Or Cory will just take care of it?
Yeah, I just was worried if there is a wetland, that do I need to go back to the planning commission to build a boardwalk? If it worsens.
Sounds like an Eric question to me.
As long as you were good from a whack-a standpoint with it being a boardwalk and properly elevated, but you wouldn't.
I know there's boardwalks along the North Country Trail too, that would be similar.
Yeah, I think it's just easier to maintain wood chips rather than a boardwalk myself. You know, you can bring more wood chips in and spread them and continue a nice path, where if you, you're gonna have continual maintenance problems and perhaps vandalism problems with a, with a wooden boardwalk.
But that's all something that could be done as far as to ordinance?
Yeah, the ordinance would allow a four-foot wide boardwalk to access over the, whatever portion would be found to be classified as a wetland, and then you could do the wood chips everywhere else.
Thinking that it doesn't need to be added to the conditional use permit?
Yeah. Especially because we're not working with a private landowner, yeah, so Cory can just take care of it.
Yeah.
All right, board wishes?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's in my district.
So, so finding it's a fact and then all, all the conditions stay the same?
Yes. I don't, I don't have any change in any of them.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Just get your permit within two years.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries.
I've had a lot of communication about this with groups and individuals, so it's, it's nice to get this kinda taken care of.
I have a question, um, on Deep Lake Park, that has not had a COP yet, has it?
No, that still would be something on the to-do list.
Yep. Okay. Would that have to be done before people start going in there to park and then maybe swimming in the lake or anything like that?
Technically before whatever use that would fall under the county park or a park definition in the ordinance would be when we'd wanna make work of getting that permit. But there's, you know, just like what we dealt with here, there's a two-year window once it's granted, in which you have to commence the use. So I know that could be a timing consideration with the grant funds and when things happen and, uh, things moving not always according to plan, don't make that easier to guess, when is the appropriate time to, to do that?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you Cory. Yeah, we voted. All right Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, and Commissioners, I just have one item. And, um, we had this, uh, seventeen-acre parcel that we split across from Potlatch available for issuing an RFP for development in the spring. And, uh, the board made a decision to award it to, um, KBRV's center. And then when I've got the development agreement finalized and forwarded to the owner, uh, And then when I've got the development agreement finalized and forwarded to the owner, uh, he was unable, his plans had changed and was unable to complete and sign that development agreement. I had a conversation with Mary and some of the other people that had interest in that property and, and had a conversation about whether we reissue the RFP or whether we have a conversation with the, with the person who also submitted a, a proposal for this. And so, uh, Eric Schelke is here representing Rakes LLC. And this is a, is a draft of a development agreement between Harbor County and Rakes for them to purchase and develop the property. I don't know if you have any questions, if you'd like Eric to speak to you, he is here in the room today.
I appreciated your letter of explanation.
Oh, thank you.
Does that, does anybody want a conversation with Eric?
I, you know, on the southern part, the Nectide River goes through there?
Yeah.
So you're aware of the setback requirements and then also interim permits that you would have to get or anything like that?
Yeah, um, we did, uh, you know, I, we started on this project or the land to the north that we purchased through you guys eight years ago or whatever. And then we were, I was working with Chip on that, South Forty. And Chip, you know, this was two years ago, so the best way to avoid environmental studies and stuff was to split that seventeen acres off that forty. Uh, and then go to auction with just the seventeen acres, we're trying to get to the, our goal was to try to get to the railroad.
So you're mainly disinterested in the north part of it?
This, this, this parcel is just the northeast seventeen acres, it's not the full forty.
And it's quite a, it is a far setback, because there's, the railroad's got theirs and then there's an easement, uh, a sixty-six foot easement next to the railroad.
Believe so.
So it's a long ways away from that Nectide River.
Well, the current parcel number has the whole thing.
And that hasn't been updated in GIS, but the split has been completed.
We're working on, but the Department of Revenue does look at.
Okay, so that's what I was wondering, so just the north side?
It's just the north, northeast seventeen acres.
North side of the tracks.
Okay, all right, no problem.
That railroad is kind of a natural, it's not a natural, but it's a berm protecting the river, I would think from.
Oh yeah.
Then there's a driveway over there too, so that's another easement.
Yeah.
So what are your plans for the parcel?
Well, our plan, we're trying to, we've, uh, do a lot of ready mix and, uh, asphalt. And, um, both, uh, Portland and E C, we could get railed in if we could get tight on the corridor. Another thing is rock is a huge issue, we truck a lot of rock, we, we truck about eighty thousand tons of rock out of, uh, up by International Falls into Bemidji right now. We've got a resource, a really big resource over in, uh, Duluth, Hermantown. We could rail rock out of there into Bemidji, a lot cheaper.
Rocks for aesthetics or?
Just for, uh, just to put into the asphalt and concrete.
Oh, okay, yeah, so not, not holders, but.
We've got a real rock shortage, like, uh, right now, all of our rocks being trucked in for all of our, from somewhere into Bemidji.
I farm over by the side and there seems to be a lot of rock out there.
Yeah, I just planted two hundred acres over there for the first time this fall, I can tell you about rocks.
So are those the kind of rocks you use, or are they too big?
No, those ones are pretty big.
Okay.
Are you gonna pick them or what?
We got piles of them already.
Um, how many years is that site, uh, you think it would be good for as a resource for gravel and rocks?
This parcel that we're buying, I don't think that there's gonna be much for, um, the thirty-five acres we bought from, uh, you guys and then we bought five from the state, uh, a few years ago. The gravel or the ridge kind of really drops off as it heads off, we'd be more or less just trying to flatten it out. I don't think that there's twenty thousand tons really to come out there and you're gonna be in the water and you don't want, you know, to keep an established pit floor or something, or something you can work on.
So you wouldn't be expen- expanding your current gravel pit by much?
No, uh, more or less, uh, getting rid of some trees and I think we'd try to leave, uh, most of that south end, we'd be able to leave for now until we tie in with the railroad, you know, and, uh, we've got, uh, neighbors to the west or a neighbor to the west, uh, and we've done really good, yeah, we've, uh, I've kept probably about seven acres of timber standing in between us and him, just cause they're.
Being a good neighbor?
Just trying to be a good neighbor, uh, the little material that's there probably ain't worth making him mad, you know, or disrupting him.
Have you been in contact with the railroad?
I have been.
So they're fairly open to the spur?
Uh, yes, but they really won't talk to you until you own land adjoining them.
Yep.
And we do in, uh, over, in Beltrami County, um, it's all in the city limits, I'm trying to avoid that for tax reasons. So yes, I have been able to talk to them a little bit, so I've got some pricing, um, to be a little cheaper, because, um, Potlatch has got a spur already, so we could tie in off of theirs, um, just, and I'd save a little money too, um, yeah.
So that, uh, this development pro- proposal really doesn't, it will increase tax capacity, because when those acres are converted to the use of the rest of the contiguous acres that, uh, that, that, um, Rakes LLC is taxed based on, the value of that property will increase. Um, and it'll go back to the tax rolls, so that's the, uh, and selling to a contiguous neighbor was always probably one of the most likely options. We've also had comments that as we're working on, uh, other northern development opportunities, that we would work with the existing businesses and, and do what we can to work with the, with the natural gas pipeline people to provide access, which would be helpful in this situation. So I, I think that there's a lot of, in the end, this makes as much sense as anything. And right now, this is the, uh, this is the offer that we have on the table, is, is Eric and your, and your father were here the other day and your family's all involved in that and, and I think that the, uh, the, the second letter that was submitted that talks about the, the number of people that they employ and the kind of business that they do and, uh, we know that when we work with them at the highway department, we've always have, have had good, um, good luck with them. So we, we wanna be a good neighbor as well.
Well, and this is an established business with a proven record?
Yeah, we, this is our ninth year operating out of that pit there, uh, uh, on the asphalt side, um, we are, um, we actually just took a big step, we ordered a, a new asphalt plant that's gonna be here in the spring. Uh, and it's supposed to be like a hundred percent, uh, energy efficient. I did go lodge three of them around across the country. We are spending, it's gonna be about six million dollars on our plant and getting rid of the old one. Um, this one, you can't smell it, you don't see the steam, you don't, so I'm really excited for that and just the few neighbors we have there. And we haven't had any issues, but it'll, it'll just help, you know, for appearance and looks, um, we are growing and doing everything we can to continue to grow with our customers and, uh, every year, we seem to be doing a lot more, uh, you know. When we started, we were just mostly small, uh, driveways, parking lots, stuff like that. Now, I'd say about, uh, seventy percent of our work's going to some sort of government agency, a county, city, state.
You don't plan on adding any additional structures to the property or anything like that?
I don't, I could, I could see, uh, up on the, I got a shop up on the last piece we bought for me, I might have to expand that in the future just cause we're growing and we're all growing our space. Nothing really down there until we were to get a spur and then there'd be some sort of storage space for the asphalt cement or the lime or, uh, stuff like that.
So we have a purchase and development agreement before us, what would be the board's wishes?
I think this makes sense for basically what's there already, um. Jeff said it'll increase tax capacity over time, so I think it's a good use of the property. I would move to approve the agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, um, I also wanna talk about, there has been some discussion about resubmitting for the RFPs. Um, with only, if we would've had more than two applicants the last time, I would maybe be in favor of that. But with, when we only had two and then the one person wasn't able to, now it's like, are we gonna go through this process, delay things some more and probably end up with the same result? I don't know, but, uh, I just wanted to mention that so that it's, it was talked about.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I would, I would agree with Ted's statement as well, I mean, it's, uh, do you, do you delay even more to end up with the same result? And how serious are any, is anyone that had previously talked about being interested in the parcels? How, you know, what's the percentage of them following through on that idea that they have without having anything formally even given to us, so?
We, we've never actually received a proposal from anybody else who expressed interest in this, in this property, so it was our, it would, we proceeded along this line because we didn't think that we would get another, another active proposal.
Yeah, there was North Star Pellet, six, seven, six, six years ago, five years ago, but that, that all fell through.
I remember through the conversations with Chip, you know, when he was talking with I and he was talking with them, he said, this is good, he said, we got more than one party interested, so this would be a good candidate to try to get on the tax roll.
But it's, it's been out there, it's been known.
Right.
This was available and, and I've had conversations with some people and, and here you are.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the, of extending the purchase agreement here?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you Eric.
Hey, you too.
Yeah, if you can hang on just for a couple of minutes. I have, uh, nothing else on my report, I think we talked about the, where we're at with the budget last week. I would just note the meetings, on the meeting to note that the district meeting is tomorrow at Bemidji, and I think that.
Are, is everyone right, able to make that? Okay. I've, I've asked Jeff to share on behalf of our county.
And I don't, and I'm skipping ahead the committee reports so that I can, you can, you can do those on the thing while I go out and have a conversation with Eric, but, um, I don't know who's on the department head report, department meeting.
Avery, is it your turn?
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. All right, who wants to start committee reports?
I can start.
And I didn't, there was one I didn't sign up in the shirt, do I need, uh, do I need to be noted? Okay, who wants to do the?
I can start, I don't have any.
Wow!
Yeah, cause I looked at my calendar and it's like, oh, I went to some, I went to some township meetings.
Did it all last, did it all a couple of weeks ago?
I think we're gonna have to put that in the minutes.
Usually pretty busy.
No, no, like I say, it's, it's right there in writing, like I say, I went to a free township meetings, but, uh.
Speaking of that, so the townships that I'm involved with, um, passed, they signed to be a part of the EDA? How did the townships feel for your sake?
I only, what I would do, I would go to the township meetings, those that got the emails, cause some didn't. And I even discussed it with them, answered questions and everything, told them, you know, that I thought it would be, I don't, I didn't see a downside, stuff like that. Uh, Farden I know signed on, um, Lake Hattie did not, and those are actually the only two that I know whether they did or did not, for sure. I have a.
Did you find that as long as they had an out, if, if there's ever a decision to levy, that they were more open to signing?
Yeah, and I think a lot of it too was they wanted, they wanted more information was a lot of it. And also, like I told them too, it's like, well, we'd only had one meeting at one time and then the two meetings, so it's kinda like, it's hard to say what we've accomplished or what we're doing because we've only had a meeting or two, um. But I also kinda think about back when we had, uh, American Rescue Plan, where we asked the townships to apply and not all townships applied. And then we asked them if they'd give us some money and none of them gave the county any money, you know? So it doesn't surprise me, I know that a lot of my townships, well, let's say all of them are very conservative. Um, I would even venture to say maybe some of them are more conservative than this board. Um, so I understand, you know, and I don't wanna sit there and try to talk them into it, it's, they're autonomous, it's their decision. But I also know that they could, in the future, if something comes up and they wanna come in. Where, but there's that five-year period, whenever they start, it's a five-year period before they could opt out, unless, like you say, if we create a levy or something. And, and to me, it's like, how much are we really gonna get accomplished in the first five years? So I thought that would be a good time, but, you know, and I would throw examples out there, say a big resort wanted to come in, you know, and needed some help, funding or acquiring some property or something, you know, that's where maybe the EDA could come in and help, you know, and it would help your township grow and stuff like that, but, you know, it's, I know like in my township, Schoolcraft, we're ninety-some percent, uh, state or federal, or county or state land. You know, less than ten percent is privately owned, and I know that they don't want development in the township. Uh, but they haven't brought, the, the meeting I went to for Schoolcraft, the clerk wasn't there, nobody had any information, uh, what we had sent out. Without, they don't meet again till November, so I'm on the, it's on my calendar to go there in November, so. But yeah, it's, uh, I have a good relationship with my townships and, and, uh, like I say, I, I, going with the A A R P or the, uh, American Rescue Plan stuff, I kinda thought it's gonna probably follow that same.
However, I, I, prior to, when the American Rescue Plan first came out, it did not include money for roads and then they changed it.
Changed it.
And so if they would not have included money for roads, there would've been a lot of townships that wouldn't have had a lot of use. So then they probably would've given money to the counties, totally see why they kept money for roads.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Lake, Lake Emma asked me to go to their meeting the other, other night, and so I went and, and yeah, they had a lot of questions, cause it is a lot of speculation on what, what could or potentially be done there, and it's really hard to speculate and know what might or might not happen. But it goes along your lines, Ted, it, it certainly can't hurt. And probably one of the most important things they mentioned is, you know, if the EDA or the HRA does a, you know, owner occupied rehab.
Right, that's the example I gave.
You know, they would potentially want their constituents to be able to be part of that. So that's kinda what kinda cinched it a little bit for them to say, you know, why not? And then there would be that opportunity if, if somewhere down the line there is a levy for them to opt out right away. So I don't know how it, how it hurts anything, for most townships, it'll have minimal or little, little effect, but you, you just don't know, you know? What if somebody wants to put in a senior housing unit that's more rural? I don't know, could happen.
I, I'd like to see that happen.
Yeah, you never know.
And I think that would be, uh, I think the northern tier would be more receptive to something like that, you know, verse, versus.
See, where that would be, uh, it could be a deal breaker for a township that opted out, not having different options for grants or other funding options, it could be a deal breaker for a small township if they weren't in.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, as soon, and, and I'm thinking if we see some, some history, you know, some results where maybe we help out a, a builder with a development or some, something like that, where then they can envision that happening in their township. I think maybe those then that decide not to opt in would maybe opt in at that point, but.
And there could be the flip side where, you know, the county might come up with some wild idea of some development in township that they don't want. I don't know, you know, I would imagine we would respect their wishes as, in a case like that, but.
And it's hard, it's hard, yeah, it's hard to, like, yeah, to, and you, you, you don't wanna dream up something like, uh, you know, a battery rendering plant.
Right.
Who, who would want that anywhere, you know? Stuff like that, but yeah.
All right, thank you, Tom?
Well, I had two meetings. Well, I had two meetings since our last time. Wasn't really a whole lot to report on. It was the, uh. Local library board, mainly talked about finances and, and gave reports of what's going on in the county and city. Um, then mental, mental health board, that's the local advisory committee. They primarily talked about what's going on at the drop-in center, some activities they've had. One of them that coming up will be, uh, the Halloween party, October thirtieth. I'd easily like to go there. It's a good time to reconnect with, uh. Some of the consumers who go there, um, otherwise, not putting anything else, no.
All right, um, I had the, the Healthy Hubbard County twenty thirty meeting, um. I just gave an update on the opioid, uh, settlement, uh, responses from the survey. That survey has actually been extended till the end of the month. There was right around eighty, uh, surveys returned. But it, it, it seemed like it was such a slow response, they wanted to open up the window a little bit longer to see if they would gather more information to make a better decision. So the end of this month, um, they'll close that, so if anybody hasn't done the, the survey, by all means do it. Um, it's just an area of interest where you wanna spend the money or where you wanna see the funds go to programs or fields of, uh. Of the operation. COVID cases, uh, forty-eight of them in August, twenty-eight in September and ten so far in October. They're busy promoting the RSV vaccine, so take it for what it's worth. The concern right now is the measles that's happening in the Twin Cities. There was fifty-two cases in the Twin Cities through Sept-, the end of September. Um, it's mostly unvaccinated children. Um, Hubbard County. Is at seventy-seven percent immuniza- immunization for children, so there is that. Bank, bit, or balance there to a hundred that they're concerned about, but it's mostly been through direct contact. It's actually been, a lot of it has been in families. And things like that where it's been transmitted. Um, and just a little bit of information about vaccines, um. For kindergarten vaccines, we're standing at about fifty-two percent. People are complying with the vaccines. Uh, statewide, the average is sixty-three percent, so it's, Hubbard County's a little bit underneath that number. There is community health fair coming up, October twenty-second at the Methodist Church. Also, they talked just briefly about the cannabis bill. Um, it's actually providing money for the public health services. To offset the negative aspect of it, so it can be used for education. Well, I, I don't know if it can be used for treatment or not, but. It's mostly education and informational things right now. WIC numbers have dropped, um. June it was five hundred and twenty-two and July was four eighty-nine and August was five hundred. And so the numbers are there still. They're having a high demand for appointments. They can't fill. Grant all the appointments 'cause they don't have enough capacity to, to do all the appointments, so the demand is still there anyway. They're doing more family home visits and, and, uh, then there was gonna be the raid, radon talk, coffee talk in November. Don't remember what day of the month that is. Second Tuesday, yeah.
Twelve o'clock at the Northwood.
So they'll talk about radon and, uh, negative effects of that. And then, um, extension, we got to meet the new, uh. Four-H coordinator. Okay, she's all, full of all kinds of ideas, you know? I, I, I was glad to see that she hit the ground running and there was, really wasn't a bunch of, uh. Stagnant time there trying to get used to something. She's got some good ideas, I think. And I guess that's, I don't know, that's about it, I think.
Yeah, and they're grateful to the county board for supporting their budget recommendations.
Yeah, definitely. And the, the one thing the educator had said is she's getting a lot of calls from outside of the county. People asking questions, trying to get information. These other counties don't have an educator. Or very limited access to an educator, so she's trying to figure out how to report properly to keep track of this. Inside-outside stuff, you know, so, um, she'll give a report. I don't remember if she said quarterly. She'd give her reports about it, so.
I know they have good turnout when they have programs.
Yes, yes, they do. And from, it's from a broad area that people come to these programs, so. I mean, I, I commend her for, for what she's doing 'cause she's, she's just a little ball of fire, you know? It's just, it's wonderful to see someone that is that passionate about getting information out to others. And especially the people that, that need it and are looking for that stuff.
I had the one, our producer, um, Carter Farms, to see it, and he talked with me on Sunday yesterday. Or no, two, two days ago, and he was full of praise for Tara.
Yep.
So I have a comment on childhood immunizations, just 'cause we talked about this at Prime West, um, because. The numbers are down there also, um, strictly informational. So the immunizations for a child two and under, if they get every immunization, it's a, it's a. Total of seventy doses of something. And for the, um, immunizations for the teens, which I think they could start at age nine if I remember right. The doses are twenty-six, and so, anyway, just a comment on that. Um, MRC, Neil Peterson from Pennington County was elected board chair and Steve Schol- Schmitz. From Meeker County is vice chair. The proposed language concerning the land transfer, which I'm assuming will be approved at the, um, December meeting will be. MRC supports a full public vetting of all public land transfers, exchanges or sale. And no transfer shall occur without local county board approval. And then the top three legislative priorities, which again, we will, we would have to do final approval in December. First is solid waste. Second is infrastructure and transportation, and third is out-of-county placement. And then I did attend the coffee, uh, talks last week and I apologize 'cause I don't have the man's name. He was a PhD, he had his PhD from the University of Minnesota. He did a presentation on cannabis. Um, and what it means for our state. He shared the same concerns, which I thought was really interesting, that. Our board and several other county commissioners across the state. I'm not gonna elaborate, we've already talked about him, so. Um, and then I had a NACO call on Wednesday and they talked about there were several counties across this. The United States that had low population that qualified for, um, application for certain grants. We didn't qualify, so I basically listened, but that's what I have.
And I don't have anything 'cause we covered the two, two I was gonna cover, so, good.
Okay.
Are you still on, on the airport board or?
Are you in there?
Are you on the airport board?
The airport tomorrow?
Are you on the airport?
That was, uh, that was actually, I thought at the beginning of the month 'cause I missed it.
Oh, because in the paper it said that they wanted to go private.
Private, I, I was wondering about that. How would they do?
Well, they were talking about, no, they were talking about adding pri- more private hangars. Yeah, that's what I thought.
They were saying going private.
Yeah, the paper talked about going private, getting out from under the city.
Yeah, that would be, I don't, I don't know how that would work so well.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have to go to the X media and keep us posted.
I was, that was out, out of town is the problem, is the reason I missed it, but there wasn't a quorum, so they couldn't act on anything.
Tom, I have a question for you, since you're on the library board. There is definitely, I have actually quit using the library here. Because of lack of, um, they've kinda changed their flavor of books. And so I've found that the IDA library still has, uh, a greater selection and I happen to go there once or twice a month for meetings. How would I, who should I contact or do I send a letter to the library board sharing my concerns? What should I do?
Uh, we created a mechanism for that. Um, a few people have used it, not as many as I would like to, but, um. It's to where you, uh, you go on to the KRLS website.
Okay.
And you'll see, you follow the links to this form you would fill out. It can be used for either, uh. You don't like material that's there or you think that's the material was lacking. Either, either way. You fill it out and it goes first to the local, um, branch manager and they can't resolve it there. Then it goes to Melissa. If you can't resolve it there, then it comes to the board.
Okay. Will I get a reply?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, I will do that.
If you do do that, I've, I've, we've, with one that came up, oh, not too long ago, I, you know, it never reached the board. So I asked, well, did, did they know that they could appeal this to the board? And then Melissa said yes, so. But, yeah, if you do end up getting to Melissa and, uh, let me know if you tried to appeal it to the board and I wanna make sure it comes all the way to the board.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just, I just have one question.
Yeah.
Um, I see on this meetings, meetings to note, um, county government one oh one. I don't, do you think it would be beneficial for me to attend that at all?
Yes.
I, yeah, I think that was really good.
Okay, all right. I was just curious 'cause I, I, this is the first time I've seen it, so.
It's, it's, it's actually new this year.
Okay.
County Government One Oh One is new this year. They've always done a new commissioner orientation on the every other year after the elections. Um, and it is not just intended for first-year commissioners. It's, it's a really good refresher for anybody, so. I'll make sure that I send the, um, uh, the agenda out to everybody. Everybody can take a look at it, but if you haven't been to newly elected. I think they're actually, newly elected is gonna be, they're gonna overlap by a day.
Oh.
So that they actually have both of those on there, but, but the, it's, it's really good programming.
Yeah, and you'll get to meet quite a few people that you'll be running.
I'll see what I can do on my calendar.
I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at that schedule because I, I believe we heard at the MACA conference last week that, um. That it's gonna overlap by a day with the newly elected and the intention was. Even newly elected was never really only limited to people who were just elected for the first time because of the type of content that they have, so. I'll, I'll get more information about it.
We'll see if I get elected.
And, and then there's good, uh, there's good discussions, so sometimes questions are asked that we don't normally think about, so.
Okay, very good. I'll, I'll see if I can make some time in my calendar for that one.
All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Steve? Tom seconds, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. And then we can't start the meeting before eleven, right?
Right.